I call this meeting of the Hudson Board of Education to order. The first item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, so I would ask you to stand if any gentlemen have their hats on, if they would remove them please, and we'll say the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this evening is approval of the agenda.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Donovan, a second by Board Member Crimmens. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda is approval of the November 7th, 2005 Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes.
Hearing no additions or corrections, I move approval of the minutes.
Okay, and actually, I did have one correction on page two, under item 12. It should read, Cook, Donovan, and Wyeth responded to citizens' comments. And Board Member Wyeth, I would just check with you and verify.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. All right, with that, then I would ask for a motion.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Wyeth, and a second by Board Member Minnick to approve the meeting minutes from November 7th, 2005, with the change that was noted. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda this evening is student staff recognitions, and our curriculum director, Sandy Kovach, is going to introduce and tell us who we are recognizing this evening.
It is my pleasure this evening to present the middle-level and the high school students who participated this fall in the State Honors Project, which is sponsored by the Wisconsin School Music Association. With us tonight is middle-school band teacher Connie Root, who will introduce the students and let us know if they participated in the band, orchestra, or choir. But I want to begin by just thanking the students and commending them for their efforts and their outstanding work and being members that kind of showed what Hudson students are capable in the area of the arts, as well as to thank not only Connie, but all of their music teachers, because these efforts probably started in elementary school. We need to recognize that their learning grows year after year, and so we want to say thank you to all the music teachers in the Hudson School District for their outstanding work. And I'd like now to introduce Connie Root and let her introduce our students.
Before you do that, Mrs. Root, I am hearing an echo from the mic on the floor. Is anyone else hearing that? To me, there's an echo. From up here, there's an echo. So maybe if you, I don't, try stand back just a little bit from the microphone, and we'll see if that helps.
Is this better? How about here?
That's good, and then just speak.
Yeah, that's better. Well, I would like to thank you for inviting the students tonight. This is indeed an honor for them to be in these groups, these middle-level and high school honors. I'm going to talk about them just briefly. I've had the privilege of, for the last nine years, of working with the Middle-Level Honors Project, and actually, that was for seven years, and for two years before that with the High School Honors Project. And these kids are just unbelievable. What they, what this project is about is students from across the state, middle-level, which has been going for about 11 years now, and the high school project has been going since I was in high school, so back in the early '70s. Students from across the state are given guidelines to audition for. Now, generally speaking, the kids that audition for these come from school districts, you know, all over the state. However, it's the kids that really put the most initiative and the urge to practice and to be their best just to audition to be in. So at the high school level, there were about 2,500 students that auditioned across the state for the 400 openings, and for middle-level, there are over 13, no, excuse me, probably 1,500 people that auditioned for the 300 spots. What the students have to do, they have to play and memorize certain scales that are required for each of their instrument. The voice does not have to do scales. When they audition, they have to sight-read, and this is at the middle-level and the high school level, and they have to perform a solo. For the middle-school students, it's a Class B or A, and for the high school, a Class A. And from our solo ensemble festival list for the state of Wisconsin, Class A is the most challenging solo that you can do. And then you perform for this one judge, who evaluates your performance and lets you know a few months later if you were chosen. And we have, I'm very proud to say that we have had many students over the last few years. In fact, there have been some years where people have kind of razzed the kids a little bit, and, man, there's a lot of kids from Hudson in here, and I, and I really think that it speaks for our program. Excuse me. I, I hope that we expect excellence from the kids, and I think that these, this is a true testament right here, sitting here. These kids really work hard to get into these ensembles, and they, again, really should be commended. And then, once they're chosen, if they're chosen, they, if they're in high school, they go to a camp in the state of Wisconsin for three days. They get the music when they get there. They sight-read, and they are rehearsed with their coaches, they're called, and they are always brought, they bring in a nationally-known conductor to work with the students. They put on a concert, this is usually in June, at the university that they happen to be rehearsing at, and then they go on their separate ways, and then they meet again in October for a half-day, and they rehearse, and then they perform the next day at the Wisconsin State Music Teachers Conference in Madison. The middle-school runs a little differently. After they're chosen, they receive the music in August, and they get a few months to practice it with their band directors, because they're younger kids, but they, again, get together, they arrive at Madison on a Friday morning. They practice all day long on Friday till 9:00 at night. They sleep, and they get up the next morning for a quick dress rehearsal, and then they perform at 1:00 in the afternoon. And the transformation from that, beginning of that practice to the end, is absolutely amazing. And they really work. I mean, they, with the end of the night, they're like, they're dragging. So we don't have to worry about them getting into any trouble, because they're so tired, they just fall asleep. So they really work very hard, and the teachers that work with them really push them and motivate them to, to do a good job. And the concerts are marvelous. And if you were tuned in on Thanksgiving Day, the concerts are played on public radio, Thanksgiving Day, the high school and middle-level honors concerts. So I would like to recognize these students, the ones that are here tonight, and there are some students, excuse me, that could not be here. Zach Bloom was unable to be here tonight, and he was in the middle-level honors band. He's a ninth grader. He was also in the middle-level honors band last year. Another person that could not be here tonight that I would like to recognize is Stephanie List, who is a ninth-grade flute player, and she was unable to be here tonight. The middle-school students that are here, and if they would stand when I say their name, are David Gillingham, who played trumpet, who is in eighth grade, played trumpet in the band, Tyler Durkey, who is in ninth grade, played clarinet in the orchestra, Monica Deloy, who is in ninth grade and sang in the honors choir, Kaitlin Bretisson, who is in ninth grade and played in the honors orchestra violin, and Stephen Dolly, who is in ninth grade and played violin this year in the orchestra, and he sang last year in the middle-level choir. Gee, that's interesting, since your mother's a choir, okay, I'm kidding. Son of Carol Dolly. And Campbell Fall, who is in eighth grade and played violin in the orchestra. So these are the middle-school students that were members of the 2005 middle-level band, choir, or orchestra. And I wasn't, I didn't know I'd be doing this, but I am very pleased to recognize these young ladies and gentlemen on my right. And it's kind of interesting that many of them were also involved at the middle-level honors in one of those groups, and these students, if they would please stand when I say their name, were involved in high school honors. Stefan Annison, who is a senior, was in band. John Probonik, who was in the middle, or excuse me, high school band for two years. Ashley Pagels, and John Probonik was, is a euphonium player, and Stefan is trombone. Ashley's a clarinet, and she was in band for two years. And three students that could not be with us tonight, Melissa Adorn, who was in orchestra last year and band this year, Alex Meinki, who was in honors orchestra this year, and Sonia Funkenbush, who was in the band this year. So these are our high school representatives. And I'll just speak for them. Thank you very much for the recognition, because they really work hard for that, for those positions to be at the state. So we thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening, and congratulations to all the students. I know that you put in many hours practicing your respective instruments, and it's a credit that you are chosen for the honors band. And I wish you continued good luck in your band careers here at the high school. And I would also like to thank the band instructors. It is a credit to you, because you do set high standards for your students, and it obviously pays off. So thank you for being here, and congratulations to the students, and we'll look forward to hearing that more of our students are involved on an ongoing basis. The next item on our agenda this evening is correspondence.
Madam Chair, there's no correspondence this month.
Okay. And thank you to the band students' parents, who also were here this evening. I know that you also put in long hours and expect high standards from your students who are in band, so thank you for being here. Next item is item seven, Topics for Action. The first item on the agenda under Topics for Action is A, Consent Items, which includes personnel and expenditures. The expenditures this month were $1,547,788.12.
Madam Chair, hearing no additions or discuss, I move for approval of the expenditures in the amount of $1,547,788.12 and 12 cents, and for the personnel items as presented.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Wyeth, and a second by Board Member Turnahoy to accept the consent items of personnel and expenditures as presented. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on our agenda is item B, under Topics for Action. We are to elect a WASB delegate and an alternate for our January convention. And just for the audience's information, each January, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards holds a convention in Milwaukee for school boards throughout the state presenting various programs, and school boards throughout the state actually present programs which we can attend. And part of the convention is a, an assembly for the school board members, where they vote on and discuss resolutions that have been forwarded to the WASB Resolution Committee from various school boards throughout the state. And this year, and we'll talk about those resolutions a little bit later this evening, this year we need to, again, nominate and elect a delegate who will go to the assembly, and that will take place on Wednesday afternoon of the convention, beginning at 1:00. So if we have anyone, last year, our alternate delegate actually stepped in and did a good job, that was Cindy Crimmens. And so I would ask if there are any board members who are willing to serve in that capacity, or if someone would nominate someone to serve in that capacity.
Madam Chair, let me maybe first ask one question, and that is that I'm wondering if any board members directly received the resolution packet from WASB, besides the president?
I did. As president, I received it.
Okay, thank you.
So I have that. So are there any board members who are interested in doing that, or?
Madam Chair, I do enjoy the delegate assembly, but I believe I'm in a session in the afternoon on Wednesday.
Okay. Board Member Crimmens, are you interested in doing that again this year?
No, I think I'm in a session to that.
Okay.
I'll volunteer.
Okay. All right. Board Member Minnick, so if we could have a formal motion from the floor?
I would be willing to be the alternate.
Okay. All right. And Board Member Donovan has indicated that she would be willing to be an alternate, and she certainly has experience with the WASB delegate assembly. So if we could have a motion to support those two board members as the delegate, that would be Board Member Minnick, and the alternate would be Board Member Donovan.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to appoint those two individuals, Mr. Minnick as the delegate and Ms. Donovan as the alternate.
And I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Turnahoy, and a second by Board Member Crimmens to approve and appoint Board Member Minnick as the delegate to the WASB Assembly, and Board Member Donovan as the alternate. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item is item C, Designation of Fund Balance.
Madam Chair, as Chair of the Finance Committee and the Treasurer, I would like to make a motion to move, place this item on the January agenda. The Finance Committee was scheduled to meet this month, but we didn't have an opportunity to meet, to review, and discuss this issue, so I would like to have the opportunity to work with the committee in coming back in January with a recommendation from the committee.
Okay. All right. We have a motion then by Board Member Turnahoy to table this item until next month's meeting, so that the Finance Committee can meet and bring forth a recommendation for an amount to designate from the fund balance to set aside. And we have discussed this at past meetings. We are discussing taking a portion of our fund balance and designating that for future capital and facility needs. Do we have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay. We have a motion by Board Member Turnahoy, and a second by Kaiser Schott. Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair, I, just one real quick comment. Being a member of the Finance Committee, I can support sending it back to the Finance Committee. However, I think with one caveat, and that is that there has been lengthy discussion on the part of the board, and also previously on the part of the Finance Committee. I would just like, just to make sure that we do bring it back in January. I think the public is expecting some form of action on the part of the board. So I can certainly support sending it back, kind of with the understanding that comes back in, in January.
And as the other member of the three-member Finance Committee, I would also support coming back in January with a designated amount, our recommendation for the board to consider. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. And again, the Finance Committee will appoint you to discuss this at your January meeting. We will discuss it and bring back a recommendation.
Thank you.
The next item, under Topics for Action, item D, Knights of Columbus Gift for Special Education. Ms. Sweet?
Last week, I received, on behalf of the school district, $2,759.54 from the Knights of Columbus, directly for the benefit of students with cognitive disabilities. This is an annual gift on their part, and it's a pretty generous one. They specify only that the funds be used for experiences and equipment and other materials on behalf of students with cognitive disabilities that we wouldn't ordinarily support. So each year, we do report back to them relative to what kinds of activities and what kinds of equipment or repair of, of equipment we have used for their gift. So I would provide that to the district from the Knights of Columbus.
Okay, thank you. Ask for a motion?
Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept the generous gift from the Knights of Columbus and to, I send them a letter of thanks on behalf of the district.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Donovan, and a second by Board Member Crimmens to accept the gift from the Knights of Columbus for the special education program. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair, Ms. Sweet, can you, as you have mentioned, this has been a gift, an annual gift of longstanding.
Oh, yes.
Can you, do you have any idea how long the Knights of Columbus have been so generous to the district?
Well, personally, I've been meeting with them for about 20 years now. I told them the other night we're growing old together, but, yeah, for as long as I can remember. They do have a national mission, and that's carried out in this community to, to serve children with cognitive disabilities. And they're very serious about it, and the community's very generous. They collect these funds through their Tootsie Roll campaign, you know, on the corners and in some of the stores, and they certainly do, and, and they do give the entire amount to us.
Well, we certainly are the very lucky beneficiaries of this continued generosity and commitment.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries seven zero. The next item on the agenda, item eight, Topics for Discussion. Item eight A is consideration, consideration of WASB Convention Delegate Proposals. In your packet, on page two, starting on two, page 239, is an explanation of the procedure for the resolutions that will be for, that will be before the delegate assembly in January, and also the, all of the resolutions that were considered by the committee, and then those that were forwarded for discussion at the delegate assembly at the January Wisconsin Association of School Boards Convention. This year, there are only five resolutions being considered, which is not very many. Usually, they are well into the teens. So, Mr. Minnick, it might be a short assembly, but on the other hand, it might be very long, there might be a lot of discussion. I will say that a lot of the other resolutions that were put forth by various school boards throughout the state had to do with school finance, some had to do with open enrollment, some with no child left behind. There were various other resolutions that were put forth to the committee, and the committee, as Board Member Donovan could tell us, does consider each and looks at each to, for merit, and then compares those with resolutions that the WASB has already adopted. And so they do look closely at those. Next month, we will be discussing those resolutions. I realize that you have just had them for a few days. I've had them for a little bit longer. If you do have any comments this evening for Board Member Minnick, as he prepares to attend the assembly, we would certainly hear those this evening, but again, we would hear those in January, right before we attend the convention. So I would open it up then for board members to comment on any of the resolutions that are there for consideration for the assembly. Just to let the public know, the five different resolutions, I'll just summarize briefly. The first has to do with school finance and reforming that, the Wisconsin School Finance formula. The next has to do with the revenue limit and the QEO alignment. The next has to do with boundary appeal board decisions, and this refers to, more to open enrollment students. The next that would be under consideration would be youth options decisions, wanting that decision to be in the hands of the school boards versus having school boards having to approve classes that are brought forth by students. And then the last looks for some type of collaboration between the WASB, the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and the WIAA to prohibit the performance-enhancing drugs. The WIAA currently does not have this covered under their rules, and so the WASB is looking to have that be part of their rules. So with that, I would ask any board members if you have comments for Mr. Minnick.
I'd just like to make a couple of comments, and one of those, and I appreciate that you're going to give everybody a chance to maybe study this further and come back with final comments and direction in January. As part of that, I'd also like to ask that our administrative staff review them, the resolutions for any impact, specifically on Hudson. As I think those of you who have served as delegates are aware, at the delegate assembly, often there are modifications and changes, amendments to the resolutions. So I'd like to recommend that, that this board give direction to any clear policies that we wish to support, and then also allow our delegate to listen to the, the discussion, listen to the amendments as the process unfolds, and then also allow Mr. Minnick the opportunity to then make his vote at the delegate assembly based on the best interest of our, of our district, rather than absolutely tying him to a resolution that may not actually appear in this final form at the, at the assembly. The one, one of the things that I guess I just wanted to highlight, and I suspect will be, could be, very, a very interesting discussion at the delegate assembly, is the bylaw change that's found on page 333 of our packets. And again, I would ask everybody just to read that. Because of my close affiliations over the past years with WASB and having chaired the Policy and Resolutions Committee, as well as the delegate assembly, I've certainly been aware of this in the past, and I personally would strongly oppose this bylaw change, and would like to ask for you to all consider this, and then consider giving that direction to Mr. Minnick when we discuss this in January. This is a bylaw change that would align the regions with the CISA's, and, and I think this letter on page 333 really outlines the opposition to that. The WASB and CISA's have very different missions and are not the same organization. So I would just ask your consideration of that bylaw change.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I just ask Ms. Donovan, and she's, I think, far more familiar with this issue than I am, just with regard to the alignment with the CISA and the WASB? I guess I was a little bit surprised at the, some of the content of the letter. I didn't, it specifically mentions here that this bylaw change would prevent the WASB from changing regional boundaries without DPI consent. I, I sort of thought that this was an autonomous agency, so even if we were to agree on our own accord to align with the CISA districts, why would we be forfeiting any of our own authority?
We would not be, the WASB would not be as an association, but if we're aligned with CISA's, and that's the bylaw of the association, then that alignment for the CISA regions only changes when it's changed by the state legislature, by the state. And so if this becomes a bylaw change, it doesn't allow then for the association to make the occasional changes that they might now.
But couldn't the bylaws be changed?
Oh, sure. It's much more difficult to change the bylaws than it is to pass a resolution.
Okay.
And that process is outlined here.
Okay. Thank you.
There's some, on the surface, there are some arguments for it that seem logical, and... and yet, from having worked very, very closely with many CISA's and also having served on the WASB board, I can tell you that there's also some healthy tension at times, and they have, these organizations are both very important and serve very different focused missions. And I think it would be a disservice to school boards to be aligned with CISA's as a bylaw.
Okay, thank you.
Board Member Crimmens, did you have a comment?
Yeah, just an observation about the fifth recommendation here, prohibition of performance-enhancing drugs. Specifically, in the, in the second line, it says perform, that it would, to clarify, all performance-enhancing drugs and methods should be prohibited, and practice is a performing handsome, performance-enhancing method. And I, I think that, I would just encourage us to expect some more clear word choices in that before we would support it as a board.
Explain what you're saying, Cindy.
To, a resolution to clarify that all performance-enhancing drugs and methods should be prohibited, while clearly drugs should be prohibited, practice is a performance-enhancing method. And I don't think the wording is clear enough that I feel like we should support it as a board unless they clarify that.
Okay. Any other comments this evening?
Yes, Madam Chair, I had a couple of things. I guess I'll address first what Board Member Crimmens just said, is I had a little problem with the language as well. Specifically, I guess, a blanket prohibition of performance-enhancing drugs, I thought, could be a little bit problematic because I, while I'm not a pharmacist, I, I think I can see that there may be certain circumstances where some athletes may be taking medication that in, could also be construed as performance-enhancing. Some steroids, let's say an athlete who had perhaps suffered a traumatic automobile accident, and there's been some tissue damage, et cetera. And, and so I would hate to, I'd like it a little bit tighter, that it specifically addresses the use of performance-enhancing drugs that have no, I guess, medicinal or remedial purpose, because I think there could be a little, little bit of wiggle room there for some, you know, unfortunate student who maybe is taking some drugs that are also on the, on the performance-enhancing list but for another reason. So I think it should be tightened up a bit. Couple other comments I had is, is one, I guess I was kind of glad to see just five resolutions being brought forward this year. Sometimes I think that the focus gets a little bit too diffused with, I know President Cook mentioned that we've often seen these numbers in the teens, and that's kind of what I recall too, and I always thought sometimes that was, was too much and sort of, I think it's better to focus on a few more prominent issues. So I guess I was glad to see it narrowed down. And my final comment is, the one issue that I wish had been addressed, however, was that there was a very thorough and interesting proposal, I'm sorry?
Three eleven.
Three eleven, oh, three eleven, which was brought forward by the Menominee area school district dealing with post-employment benefits. I think this is a huge issue. I think this is a very important issue. We've just seen the news lately, some very large American corporations, i.e. General Motors, that are being significantly burdened by this, and we have this coming too. So I was very disappointed to see that this didn't make the cut, and I, and I really think it should be brought to the forefront. So I guess I would maybe encourage our delegate to see if it could maybe be brought to the table, because I think it's a, it's a very significant issue for, for districts statewide.
Maybe I can just follow up with a comment as it relates to that. I believe that part of the focus on having only five resolutions that came forward was in part to also allow some additional time for districts that submitted resolutions to bring theirs to the floor, which most of you realize occurs each year. You know, any resolutions that are not forwarded by the Policy and Resolutions Committee can be brought forward by the district that proposed it. And I believe that, you know, we may see many of these. There are a number that are here, and I would encourage people, as you did, to identify any that you think you would want to have specific direction given to Mr. Minnick.
Madam Chair, I would strongly second what Board Member Kaiserzot said. I was one of the, one of the board members who went to the region for WASB evening session, and Menominee's presentation was outstanding. Their work is very, very well done, very thorough. There's, there's no way around the fact that we are facing an enormous liability and a huge expense to all school districts that takes away from operations, takes away from education, takes away from teacher recruitment and other activities that are directed towards our student learning. And I certainly agree with Board Member Kaiserzot that it is something that more, that we ought to be bringing to a, to the front of our, of our attention, and I would also encourage Board Member Minnick to support this if it comes up to the floor.
And I would just comment that Menominee also mentions the health insurance costs going forward, and there were also several resolutions brought forward by various school districts regarding the health insurance costs that continue to rise in the state of Wisconsin. So my guess is, as Board Member Donovan indicated, that some of these schools who did not have their resolutions chosen for actual consideration by the delegates will bring them forward. And I believe it would be necessary also, or it would be good for us to also contact the Menominee School District Board of Education and indicate support for their bringing forward their resolution on that day. There were several school districts that had written in support of other districts' resolutions also, so that would be something that we could do also.
I would like to see us do that.
Madam Chair, are you looking for some type of action in January, specifically on that?
We are, what we will do in January is just discuss them and give you some direction. We don't specifically take action and take a motion to vote, because as Board Member Donovan indicated, we can give you direction, but being that we will not be there, we won't know the discussion that takes place and the changes, the modifications that will take place to the resolutions presented. So we will leave it in your hands to vote, however you feel is necessary on that day and how it will benefit our district.
I think one thing I would, I would be looking for is some input from the other board members, and I as well went through that Menominee discussion item, and did not attend the session, but was very impressed with the detail and the rationale behind their presentation. And I was surprised that it didn't reach to be one of the, one of the five resolutions. So I, I would appreciate some comment and direction, and maybe we can do that in January, specifically on the Menominee resolution.
Any other discussion? All right, if not, we will come back then in January with, if you have further comments for Board Member Minnick to take to the delegate assembly, we will share those at the January meeting. Thank you for your input this evening, some good comments, and I look forward to hearing more from you in January on the proposals. The next topic for discussion is policy number 1170, Public Records Revision. Board Member Wyeth.
Madam Chair, this policy has been adopted by the board not too long ago, and we are here tonight reviewing it not for content as much as for presentation. The Ms. Sweet of our office went, or of the district, went through and looked at our policy and really tweaked it. It is now much better organized, it's easier to follow, the language is simpler. In doing this, we also looked at policies from other districts, as well as sample policies from the WASB. Significant changes, there really aren't any, except, as I say, the tremendous clarification. And then we also did clarify fees for board members in the event that they are seeking, or they're requesting records. It was, it was previously unclear.
Okay.
And I'd be happy to answer any questions from board members.
Board members, do you have any comments or questions at this time?
Something else we added, Madam Chair, is in front of every, every policy we're trying to articulate, what it is we're trying to accomplish with these policies, and that's another addition.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right, hearing no comments, we will again bring this forward in January to vote on the revisions, and so at that time, board members will again have an opportunity to share any comments that they have. Excuse me. The next item on our agenda then is Board Committee's Advisory Council Reports. Item A, under number nine, is the Communication Committee Meeting Update, and Board Member Crimmens.
Well, Communications Committee did meet, and we discussed the candidates, the process for consulting for communication services, and that was moving forward. Checked on the, just checked in on the, on the progress of that. And we previewed a, another possible mailing that the district is considering for the next, sometime in the next four to six weeks, and set meeting dates for the next six meetings. It was well attended. We're making progress and looking forward to working with the people who will be providing us with communication services. One of the things I think that is really important for, for this committee is just really to ensure that we are remaining at the policy level as opposed to micromanaging the communications of the district. And I think that is well understood by the committee and going well.
Okay, good. I have a question or a clarification?
It's in the water.
Okay. And I may not have heard what you were saying clearly, Cindy, but I thought I understood you to say that we previewed a future communication?
No.
Okay.
No, just that we discussed the progress of that.
Right.
Process.
Because we did not preview any of it.
Didn't preview.
But did talk about future communications.
The number of, oh, yeah.
Communications per year. I thought I understood you to say we previewed something and we didn't. I mean, we didn't, we haven't reviewed any specific communications.
That's correct.
Okay.
No specific communication.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. I may have misunderstood. Okay.
Visual, visual learner, I, thinking, hearing, seeing, and saying are all the same to me.
All right, any other comments on the Communication Committee Meeting Update? It sounds like you're making great progress, so thank you. The next is the District Curriculum Council Meeting Update, and that's Sandy Kovac.
The District Curriculum Council met a week ago and continued their review of curriculum forms, as well as refining the curriculum review process. We shared updates as far as the three main curriculum committees that are currently working, language arts, math, and social studies has begun their process. And then I also provided along with our principals an overview of our measures of academic progress. Now that we have a fall, spring, fall, we have a year's worth of data to share, and just kind of looked at that data, as well as had the principals share a little bit more of the impact it is having at that classroom level, now that teachers have that immediate feedback and really using that data, beginning to use that data to guide instruction. Very good.
Okay. The next is the Personnel Committee Meeting. Board Member Donovan?
You've acted earlier this evening on the personnel items that we discussed. Also, we continue to proceed with our negotiations with the custodial union.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, the Policy Committee Meeting. Board Member Wyeth?
You've also previously acted on the major bit of business that the committee worked on. We've taken up, we are taking up review of communications policies from other districts. We've looked at districts who have what we think are some best practices in overall communications, and are looking at the policies that they have in place to enhance and support that. We're also taking on various technology policies that we do not have in place or that are not fully up to date, having to do with technology integration, tech literacy, and assistive technology. All of these are required under the stated mandated technology plan, which is due in April of this year that the Technology Committee is working on.
Madam Chair, I just did want to say one comment. Ms. Kovac, it's really very impressive to see, to hear what the Curriculum Council is working on and the teams, because I know that one of our goals for the strategic planning process was the use of data in improving our teaching and our student learning. And it's, it's very gratifying to hear that that is now an integrated part of the curriculum review process.
Any other comments?
Yes, I could add to that, just saying that hearing that discussion in the, in Curriculum Council of the use of data and the, the way that the building administrators are really embracing that and feeling that it's benefiting teaching and instruction was really gratifying. I think that it's really well on its way. So, you know, not just using it, but really desiring to push, to push it, to get as much out of it as they can. I was encouraged by the response to the data that's available.
Thank you. We will move on to item 10, Superintendent's Report on Upcoming Events and District Highlights. There are two items, school highlights and then the STAR grants.
Madam President and board members, I have, in the last few days, had the opportunity to visit two of our schools, and will be doing a third one this week. And last week, I spent a day in classes at the high school, and then today, I was at Hudson Prairie and spent the day in classes there. On Thursday of this week, I will be at the middle school. And by the end of January, I will have spent some time in each of the schools, at least a day in each of the schools, to learn about teaching and learning. And it has been a wonderful opportunity for me to connect with students and our teachers, and to find out the good news about teaching and learning that's very vital in the classrooms that I've visited. And I know they're representative of the other classrooms, and I can tell you, there are very good things happening for our students all around. So I wanted to share some more of those good things, because there are a lot of initiatives that our principals and teachers and support staff are carrying forward. So I wanted to highlight a few of those, and with the help of the principals, they have identified some things in their schools. So I will talk about first, Amy Hamburg told me about EP Rock and some good news that's going on there. Their students and, and staff really care about their neighbors and are demonstrating good citizenship by, they contributed $756 to Hurricane Katrina relief efforts, and they also contributed 8,000 pounds of food for the Hudson area food shelf. And then Rock is also sponsoring 12 families for the local Operation Help Christmas Sharing. And I had to limit some of the things Amy said because, moving on to the other schools, but it's fun to hear about them, and we're going to have more opportunities in the future to share more. Peg Shoemaker from Holton talked, told me about their all-school write, and this includes all students. So each month, their entire school actually includes the teachers as well, write on a topic chosen by a staff member, and they involve all staff members. So in November, Mrs. Brooks, who is the head cook, asked that they write about a favorite recipe or a food that she would make in the kitchen. And then every Wednesday, they select those that are read to the school during announcements. Journals are saved from year to year, and they are indicators of writing progress as the students move through the school. At Hudson Prairie, and I saw this in action this morning, Kathy Schuman shared that there are 63 students out of the 75 students in fifth grade who have volunteered for the Kids' News Program. This is a broadcasting program that is offered to fifth-grade students, those are the ones that participate, and they put a broadcast on each day for the rest of the school. And at nine o'clock in the morning, they present this broadcast over all the TV stations, and it looks like a TV station. The students write the scripts, they produce, edit, record, and film, and it's live. So whatever happens goes at that time. And the students each have their own individual roles, and they take them very seriously. There's one student who, there are multiple cameras, and so that student manages between the PowerPoint presentation that students put together for the day, and also the two cameras, and whatever else is going up, the direction of where the cameras are going, and it's just phenomenal, what they're learning through this. So there's a weather update, there's daily happenings, there's a recess activity report, the lunch report. the lunch report, student birthdays are all announced, there's a sports report, and world news updates. This is daily. And then the Pledge of Allegiance is usually recited, as it was today, by kindergarten students, and so all of their schoolmates see them do this. The students participate in this program, receive instruction and practice in various things, which would include writing, speaking, reading, and technology benchmarks that we have as a district. Highlights from Anissa Cravens from North Hudson, I'm just going to talk about the ones that she talked about that focused on writing. They had an author and illustrator of several books come in, Warren Hanson, spent the day with them, working and talking with students, and so they were illustrating books. And he drew many pictures that will be displayed in the school. There also, their Achievement Action Team is busy putting together a sixth trait writing workshop during January for all their new teachers, so that they can be consistent throughout the school. Pat Hodges said at Willow, they have started a new reading program, an additional reading program. A parent volunteered to recruit adult volunteers to facilitate book talks for students in grades three, four, and five. This was a voluntary program that goes throughout the whole year, and it's on a biweekly basis. The students read award-winning literature at home and then participate in the book talk over lunch and recess time. And each level will read and discuss about eight to 10 additional books beyond their classroom books. And the learning experiences, I'm told, are both for students and adults through that process. And Diane Franklin told me from the middle school that, once again, we have good citizens who, the students raised $5,000 in one week in their annual penny wars. And so they use this money for toys for tots and Operation Help. And a group of students from our Kids Who Care Club went shopping last Thursday and selected the toys for that. And at the high school, Ed Lucas, one of the things that Ed Lucas talked about was a musical learning collaborative between the high school and the middle school, and we heard about some of our musicians already. But this, the high school jazz band teamed up with the middle school jazz band for a successful concert in the middle school, December 1st. And then the eighth-grade band will be spending a day in December at the high school with the wind ensemble. So learning from each other, I think it's a wonderful experience. And if you haven't made note of this yet, the choir concert is scheduled for December 19th at 7:30, right here. So those are school highlights. I certainly enjoyed them, and I hope you do too, and we'll bring them back at another time as well, and talk about all the good things that are happening in our schools. Moving on to the Education Foundation, we are so fortunate in our school community to have such a dedicated board and community members who contribute to education in this way. And you know all about this, the Education Foundation. They have had a STAR grant program that encourages exceptional ideas that improve educational progress and allows educators to implement creative ideas. They have something called a STAR Initiative Program that encourages innovative staff training and curriculum development by providing grants to individuals and teams of educators. And now they have added two additional programs, one's called the Connections Program, and this promotes student participation in community service and volunteerism. And then another one called Student Strength, and this encourages students to be innovative in developing and implementing programs that have a positive effect on people and add to the quality of education offered in our schools. And they have just awarded 22 grants totaling $49,808. And not only that, but Hudson School District, nine elementary teachers received grants, nine middle school teachers, five high school teachers, the district nurse, hearing specialist, two counselors, and all seven administrators were awarded grants to do additional innovative things that, to add to the experiences of our students. And then St. Patrick also had three teachers, and Trinity Lutheran had five teachers who received grants. The foundation has, in the past, awarded grants two times a year, and now they will be awarding them four times a year. So our teachers and administrators were very excited about that new potential for funding to creative ideas. So I really want to commend the Education Foundation for supporting our program and adding to learning in our schools.
Thank you. And I would like to thank the principals who are here this evening and the students of our schools, who have always been generous to those in need during various natural disasters, at the holiday time, at different times. We truly have some generous students in our community, and it's good to see that they are reaching out to those in need. So thank you, administrators, for continuing those programs. I remember those penny wars, and it was important for your child to bring pennies in, so it's nice that they're continuing those things and getting students involved in helping others. That's important. The next item on our agenda is citizens' requests to speak to the board, and we have no requests this evening. I would again mention, if you do have something for a board member or administrator, you can contact the administrators here at the school. And the school board members all have listed phone numbers. You can contact us, either by phone or in writing, or alternatively at the January meeting. Item 12, there is no need then for a board administrator response. Item 13, Board Forum. We have two items, and both are by Board Member Donovan, so I will allow you to discuss those.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first item that I had wanted to mention was the Fall Regional Meeting that was held in October. And it's been referenced, actually, already a couple of times this evening, but I had asked that it be placed on our agenda, because I think that it's important for not only the board members who are aware of these activities, but for the community to understand that board members take seriously their role to become educated and to remain current on issues that affect public education in Wisconsin and directly affect our community as well as our state. The Fall Regional Meeting is just one of many opportunities that board members have to learn about current issues. And this is a meeting that involves board members and district administrators from 33 school districts in western Wisconsin, and it's typically held in Eau Claire in the fall. Board Member Wyeth, Superintendent Bowen Eggbroton, and myself attended this year. And I'm not going to go into great detail about all of the items that were addressed, but we did hear, as was referenced earlier, a very fine presentation by Menominee that outlined the data in support of the resolutions. We also had a, I thought, a very, very outstanding presentation on best practices in leadership for student achievement that was presented by the Eau Claire School District, that really emphasized their continuous improvement model that they've used and have seen, as was referenced earlier, data-driven results, using student achievement data to improve learning within the district. We also heard reports on the current legislative issues in Wisconsin by WASB Legislative Services staff, as well as some of the information regarding the Adequacy Funding Commission. And then we also heard a report from the new WASB Executive Director, John Ashley, who emphasized that his, three areas that he's been addressing as he has traveled throughout the state are student achievement, first and foremost, local leadership on special education, and we'll be hearing much more, as we have for a few years now, on aligning state and federal standards and regulations. And then, third, the importance of economic development of state and community, communities as it relates to K-12 districts throughout the state, and school finance, of course. And last, but certainly not least, I want to recognize that Board Member Wyeth was recognized for achieving Level Two in the Board Development Program that WASB sponsors, and that occurs by attending events and becoming informed and staying educated on events in education in Wisconsin. So those were my comments about the regional meeting. I would encourage board members to attend not only the regional meeting in the future, but other events. It's a wonderful opportunity to talk with school board members and district administrators from throughout this part of the state, and you really do learn and share that issues are very common among many of our districts. And you learn a lot from other board members. The next item that I had asked to place on the agenda is related to the WASB Joint Convention, which is a joint convention with the School Board Association, the school district administrators, and the school business officials. And again, as all of our board members know, this is held each January. And one of the very important aspects of the convention is the delegate assembly that we've discussed earlier on our agenda, and that is the policymaking board, policymaking, the primary policymaking event and activity that involves a representative from every school district in the state. So thank you, Board Member Minnick, for serving in that role, representing us. It really is an important area where you look not only at how things affect Hudson, but how issues will affect the entire state. The convention this year, as all of you have received in the mail, I'm sure, a variety of information, has a wide range of topics that will be presented on 21st century issues, collaboration and partnerships, finance, governance, leadership for student achievement, professional development, and school law. There's really a wide variety of topics presented by professionals, as well as best practices from other school districts. And as I looked through the agenda, I found that it will be very hard to pick and choose during some time slots, and typically, what we've done in the past is, we'll even coordinate schedules so that we make sure that we cover all of those of interest to our school district. And I certainly view this as another really important way that each of us stays informed on current educational topics and issues. And of course, we'll report back to the board and to the community upon our return.
Thank you. And I think this year, we have six board members going, if I'm not mistaken. So good representation, and as Board Member Donovan indicated, there are always very good sessions put on by other boards and administrators and guest speakers. There's always something interesting going on. So look over your booklets, and we can strategize how to best cover the different topics that will be presented. The next item on our agenda then, this evening, we have a closed session, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we adjourn to closed session.
Okay, and can you read pursuant to, read it as it's stated on the agenda, please?
I'd like to move that we adjourn to closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statute Section 19.851-F for the purpose of considering disciplinary data of a specific person.
Thank you, and we will have a roll call vote. And Board Member Crimmens, can you begin?
Crimmens, aye.
Minnick, aye.
Donovan, aye.
Cook, aye.
Wyeth, aye.
Kaiserzot, aye.
Motion carries 7-0. We will adjourn to closed session. I would like to thank the public who is here this evening for attending, and wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a safe holiday season. Thank you for attending.